So we're kicking off the third year of the decade of the art of the lighting of our new iconic Orlando sculpture outside the Orlando Citrus Pole. And what's great about this, we were able to preserve the iconic Orlando sign that the Orlando visitors, Convention and Visitors Bureau had put up. We preserved those and came up with a reuse, which is this beautiful sculpture behind it. What we're creating is a light bridge that begins here and ends at Lake Tupiola. So on the way down to our street, we now have street signs of street light.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the April 6, 2015, meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered by Reverend Josh Bell of the Spring of Life United Methodist Church, which is located on Moss Park Road in Lake Nona, which would be District One Commissioner. Reverend Bell became the pastor in July of 2014. Spring of Life is a multi-generational, multicultural church committed to reaching its community through love and service. Pastor Bell is a native Floridian who graduated from the University of Florida. Before receiving his Masters of Divinity from Asbury Cemetery here in Orlando.
Seminary.
Seminary, what did I say? Cemetery. Sorry.
Well, one attitude's not bad.
Yeah. Okay. I got in trouble because I've been forcing people to stand during the invocation. So some group called me out on that. So I'm going to tell you that you can stand or you can remain seated, whichever you choose, during the invocation. And I am however going to stand and anybody else that wants to can do that as well. And then after the invocation will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by District One Commissioner Jim Gray.
If you would join me in prayer. God of all people, we give you thanks for this beautiful day that you have gifted us with. We give you thanks for this opportunity, for this gathering to come about of leaders, those who are elected, and those who represent others who are not in this room. Lord, we ask that you would give wisdom as decisions are made, as discussions are had, as policies are set. We pray that in all things, all people would be kept in mind, the people of this city, this city beautiful. We pray that the decisions made here would reflect well on them and that we would all come together to make the best decisions possible. We give you thanks and we give you praise. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the body from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Bell. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
President.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item of business is consideration of the minutes from the agenda review and city council meetings of March 23rd. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor. The motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Well, we have a great honor today. I'd like to acknowledge that Congressman Dan Webster is attending our meeting today to present a special United States flag, which will be auctioned off by the Victims' Service Center on August 29th at the Menelo. And he'll be presenting that to Louis Damiani, who is the Executive Director of the Victims' Service Center. So welcome Congressman Webster. The audience here found out you were coming. We generally don't have as many people that come to our city council meetings, but I'm glad you're such an attraction that you filled up the entire chamber. That is fantastic. Marcia, would you come to the podium and introduce the first item, force?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Yes, I will. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Team, citizens, and other special guests. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each year, the mayor and city council help to raise awareness and educate our citizens about how to prevent and address sexual violence. This is something that is important and that matters in our city, and each year, our city council and mayor take time to acknowledge that. Our partner in this effort is the Victims' Service Center of Central Florida. It is my pleasure, at this time, to introduce the center's executive director, Louis Damiani, who will give a brief overview before the mayor reads the proclamation. Louis?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. It's my distinct pleasure to be here with you today to kick off Sexual Assault Awareness Month. You know, with me today, I want to really quickly recognize our board chair, Craig Swiger. Also Bridget Keef, who is the Executive Director of Downtown Orlando Partnership, she's with us today. And Alan Johnson, I believe, is also here. He's one of your city's finest, and we genuinely appreciate you affording him the time to serve on our board and do the great work that he does for us. The mission of the Victims' Service Centers is to provide services and resources to victims of sexual assault, traumatic circumstances, and violent crimes. And we do that a whole lot of ways. We are the Certified Rape Crisis Center for Orange and Osceola Counties, and we provide confidential emergency 24/7 counseling. We provide forensic exams to collect DNA evidence. We provide long-term therapy and crisis counseling as well. Each year, as you heard, in the month of April, it's designated as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And we do a whole variety of activities across the month to try to draw awareness to that. And thanks to our partnership with the city, today is our official kickoff. And tonight, the universal color of Sexual Assault Awareness Month is the color teal. And I'm proud to say that, thanks to you all, that the Lake Yola Fountain will be lit tonight in teal, the spire at the Amway Center will be lit in teal, your Tower of Light out front will be lit in teal, the fountain out front will be lit in teal, and even your next-door neighbor over at the Aloft, they're going to light their whole building in teal tonight. So downtown is going to be a wave of teal, and hopefully, people will start asking the question, what is that teal color? And I gave each of you a ribbon, so I hope that you'll wear it throughout the course of the month and stand with us in unity to draw awareness to sexual assault and try to end it in our community. I'm excited also to tell you that while today is the kickoff, on the 29th of the month is sort of how we wind down Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And each year, we do something that's called Denim Day. And I found out earlier today that the city, for the second year in a row, is going to join us as a partner, and we appreciate that, and we're looking forward to it. They're joining along with Rollins College, as well as Valencia, who have also signed as partners, and now we're going to get everybody else to join us as well. And for those of you that are asking, what is Denim Day? It is a nationwide awareness campaign. It was originally triggered by a ruling in the Italian Supreme Court where rape victim was, conviction was actually overturned when the justices felt that the victim was wearing tight jeans, and so she must have helped her rapist move, remove the jeans, and thereby implying consent. The following day, the women of the Italian Parliament, they came together, they wore their jeans in solidarity with this victim. And since then, wearing jeans on Denim Day has become an awareness symbol against erroneous and destructive attitudes about sexual assault. And so we thank you for joining on board and joining us, and encourage your other colleagues and businesses to also wear denim on the 29th. I know it's the state-of-the-city address, and it's going to be a big day here in Orlando, and hopefully it'll be a wave of denim on that day.
I would so love to wear jeans.
You have my permission! But thank you, Mayor. And then finally, 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 we do a bunch of stuff throughout the month, as I mentioned, but on the 17th of this month, we will do our Second Annual Gala. And we do that at the city's very own Menelo Museum. And last year, we had about 300 in attendance. I know Commissioner Sheehan was there, and we appreciate you being there. And it is a very, very special night with entertainment and actually the city's Dubbs Dread Catering. They donate all the food for the event. It is a great fun. It's after work on a Friday night, and we certainly, I passed out invitations to all of you, and I hope that some of you will be able to attend again. I heard, Mayor Dyer, that you're planning to be there, and we appreciate you committing to joining us on that. And the, one of the features of the event, one of the funnest parts of the event, is a very, very special silent auction. And this year, it's extra special. And the reason why it's extra special, well, I'm going to let Congressman Webster explain why.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for what you do for the city of Orlando and for the great city it is. It's an awesome thing, and I enjoy the new buildings. It's just awesome. It's amazing what you've done. But I know also you support and thank you for supporting these volunteer organizations, including the Victims' Service Center, which is something that I've toured, and I believe they do a fantastic work here in, and there is just, this is a heinous crime, especially trafficking and other things that are done. It's awful. It's a scourge, not in just our area or in country, but around the world. And so anyway, in honor of that, we flew, in honor of the Victims' Service Center, we flew a flag over the United States Capitol, and we're giving it to them. This is it. It's certainly, it's boxed up nicely, but it can be used outside, too. It is weather-worthy, and I hope someone will come and bid a lot of money for it. We've had pretty good success at most of the 501(c)(3)'s that we've supported in their silent auction of getting lots of money from a little flag, which is important. And so anyway, Louis, it's good to present this to you.
It's an honor.
Thank you for your work in the community, and thank you all for letting me come.
Thank you.
So a great honor and a privilege, and I am remiss if I don't introduce my staff. We have several members of the Victims' Service Center that are here. If you guys could stand up and be recognized, please. We have all masters-level counselors, social workers, crisis intervention folks that are on call 24/7, and they are an amazing group of individuals, and I'm honored to be part of that team.
Louis, so I have a proclamation that I'll read, and then I'll come down and we'll do some pictures. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every resident of the city of Orlando, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community because statistics indicate that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped in their lifetimes, and whereas with leadership dedication and encouragement, there is evidence that we can successfully prevent sexual violence in the city of Orlando through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas the city of Orlando strongly supports the efforts of the Victims' Service Center, law enforcement, and local partners and citizens to actively engage in efforts to prevent sexual violence and help survivors connect with services. Now therefore, I Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, hereby do proclaim the month of April 2015 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Orlando. Okay, I'm going to take one item a little bit out of order. Yesterday was Frank Billingsley's birthday, and he is standing in the back of the room, a little bit embarrassed now. I suppose that he turned a little bit red back there. So as is tradition, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Frank. Happy birthday to you. Frank and I share the same birth year. But I have not had my birthday this year. That is exactly right. So Cindy Brown was with Congressman Webster, and she's his chief of staff here in the district. And Celeste Brown, who is the Regional Director for Senator Nelson, has also joined us today. Celeste, thank you for being here. And Nick Corvino, who is the Central Florida Regional Manager for CFO Jeff Atwater, is here as well. Where are you, Nick? Ah, there you go. Okay, thank you all for being here. All right, our second presentation, I'm going to call on Orin. How about you take a turn up here for National Community Development Week?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Today, we celebrate the start of National Community Development Week. The Department of Housing and Community Development would like to recognize one of our significant partners working to address homelessness, the Men's Service Center. The city of Orlando, along with Orange County and the Coalition for the Homeless of Central Florida, entered into a tri-party agreement to design, plan, and construct the Men's Service Center on Central Boulevard in Orlando. The Men's Service Center was a CDBG project, with the city of Orlando contributing $1.6 million, Orange County contributing nearly $5.1 million in CDBG funds, and in addition to considerable additional support from our community. Here today to tell us about the Men's Service Center is Mr. Brent Trotter, President and CEO of the Coalition.
Okay, well, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I've forgotten my remarks, so I'm just anxious to hear what I have to say, as some of you are perhaps. But it is our privilege to be a partner with the city of Orlando to address the issues that are facing us with regard to homelessness. It is also good to see one of our partners on the dais today with Commissioner Stewart and his service at Christian Service Center, a partner that we also cherish and value very much in our relationship. For a number of years, the Coalition for the Homeless realized that one of the things that was woefully inadequate in our service provision for homeless men was services that were meaningful and life-changing. We operated what was known as the Pavilion, and the Pavilion was an emergency shelter, drop-in center where men would come to us homeless and then would leave us homeless after a night of shelter. And our Board of Directors, along with our staff, began to realize that we certainly needed to do more than just provide a meal, that indeed, addressing homelessness is more than a meal. And we wanted to make sure that those who wanted it were able to access the meaningful services that would allow them to transform their lives. And so with the partnership with the city of Orlando, and certainly with Mayor Dyer's leadership, and being able to do something differently for our community, we were able to build what is known now as the Men's Service Center. And the Men's Service Center, I think, I need a 14-year-old up here, I don't know how to run this technology, is open, I see it here, but I don't see it up there, is open, and we're providing meaningful services to 250 men every night. These men are receiving what would be referred to as wraparound services, they're receiving case management. We have a program designated, 50 beds designated for men who are struggling with the demons of alcohol and substance abuse addiction. We also have 50 beds that are designated for our veterans, those who have served, and because of their own inability to access services or because of the failure of the system, they have begun to self-medicate, and of course, they have devolved all the way down into homelessness. And so we're addressing that as well. We're also seeking to address the many men who are economically challenged because of that time in life where they lost a job, they lost everything, and they have nowhere else to turn. We have operational, opportunities for men to attend educational classes that is part of the Orange County Public School System, so that they can get a VOTEC certification that will put them in the marketplace for a living wage kind of job. So we're very pleased to be able to report to you that already, in the few months that we've been open, we actually had a soft opening in June of 2014. We have already placed 125 men in housing as a result of that, and then currently, we have 250 men in the program, and we have a waiting list of over 200 waiting to get into the building. So it significantly speaks to what we're doing in addressing the issue of homelessness. And so the bottom line for that is to say that our community now has 125 men who, prior to the Men's Service Center, were homeless, and that in our view of how these guys are seeking the services, over 375 men are now off the streets of Orlando and the city beautiful and our larger community because of the Men's Service Center, and we could not do it, sir, without your leadership. Thank you for that. Thank you Commissioners for your leadership and for your support in what we're doing. It's a pleasure to be a part of this community and to have the leadership in place that's addressing such a critical issue that's not only serious to this community, but across this nation.
I have a proclamation, city of Orlando. Whereas the week of April 6 through the 11th, 2015, has been reserved as National Community Development Week to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program. And whereas the CDBG and home programs provide annual funding to local governments to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing and economic opportunities to low and moderate-income persons. And whereas the CDBG and home programs have been administered by the city of Orlando and have positively impacted the city and its citizens through leveraging federal dollars, thereby providing needed infrastructure improvements, neighborhood center construction improvements to park and rec facilities, elimination of slum and blight, and preservation of its housing stock. Now therefore, I Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, hereby do proclaim the week of April 6 through the 11th, 2015, as National Community Development Week in the city of Orlando. Okay, here is the one that most of you are here for. Marcia, would you come up and introduce Volunteer Appreciation Month?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. Mayor Dyer and city Commissioners and everyone here today, we are so very fortunate in the city of Orlando to have so many people that give back in various ways. As all of you know, because all of our Commissioners are involved as volunteers and with volunteers, our city is better because of volunteerism. And Mayor Dyer just hosted his annual Volunteer Appreciation Reception. Thank you to the Commissioners that could join us for that. And we feel that volunteers and national service members are the lifeblood of our community because of their dedication, their commitment, their patriotism, their kindness, and their hard work. So whether you serve in a city department or in our community, we are very, very pleased and fortunate to have you. We're grateful for our valued volunteers and our valued national service members. Each of you, whether a citizen, employee, volunteer, or national service member, helps to make our city a better place and contributes to the quality of life in our city. So it is my pleasure at this time to ask Mayor Dyer to come up and read the proclamation, and then we want all of our volunteers and national service members to come forward.
City of Orlando proclamation. Whereas President Barack Obama has designated the month of April, oh, this one's a little tinier, to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers and national service members throughout our nation. And whereas last year, more than 65 million Americans gave their time and service to our nation, which is a testament to the compassion, generosity, and of the American spirit. And whereas the city of Orlando commemorates National Volunteer Appreciation Month by recognizing its valued volunteers and national service members at the annual Mayor's Volunteer Appreciation Reception and the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. And whereas the city of Orlando is a proud member of the National Cities of Service Coalition, is implementing our Cities of Service Initiative, Orlando Cares, to engage more residents and partners in impact volunteering that fosters youth literacy, youth crime prevention, and community safety. Now therefore, I Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, hereby do proclaim the month of April 2015 as Volunteer Appreciation Month in the city of Orlando. Give them just a second. Were you wishing that I had your piece before they all left, Commissioner Ortiz? I didn't set the order. Okay, in continuing this theme of recognizing volunteers, Commissioner Ortiz would like to recognize and thank some volunteers in the program in his district.
Thank you, Mayor, and fellow Commissioners. Today, we're also celebrating the fifth anniversary of the at this office. They have received over 400 cases since its opening. Since day one, we had the great honor of having Mr. Tom Goulet as the office manager of this location. Mr. Goulet has been the guiding star at this office. I can say today without a doubt that without him, there wouldn't have been a seniors vs. crime office in the City of Orlando. Tom, you're a great friend to our community and to myself. You've served the city in our fire department for 27 years and continue your career in Orange and Osceola Counties for nine more years. You're a true public servant. I want to say thank you on behalf of our community and all the seniors that your office has been able to assist in the last five years. Tom, can you come up here? We also have as part of the office, and she's been serving also with Mr. Tom Goulet, Ms. Marquita Anderson for five years. So, could you please come up here? In celebration of Volunteer Appreciation Month, I would like to also present a small talking of appreciation to a very special volunteer and friend of our community in District 2, Mr. Sergio Padilla. Mr. Padilla is the creator and president of the Metro Orlando Hispanic Community Emergency Response Team, which covers Orange, Osceola, Volusia, and Hillsboro Counties. He created this organization in 2009. In 2011, his organization was recognized by FEMA Citizen Corps. Since this program started in central Florida, Mr. Padilla has assisted over 1,800 people in completing community emergency response training. He has also worked very closely with Mr. Manny Soto, our City Manager of Emergency Management. Additionally, for the past five years and on a monthly basis, Sergio goes to the Orange County East Public Library and facilitates CPR classes and a course entitled "How to Be Prepared Before, During, and After Emergency: The First 72 Hours." This library is the only one in Orange County that has a table full of information in Spanish and English related to FEMA and on how to handle different emergencies. This is all thanks to Mr. Padilla's leadership. Mr. Padilla is also very passionate about this program and also about volunteering and
for that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the Medical Eye Bank of Florida was established in 1978 by the Tissue
servicing senior citizens in our district. Sergio, for this reason and many more, I would like to present this plaque to you for
Banks International, TBI, with a vision to serve local donor families, surgeons, hospitals,
your wavering commitment and dedication while serving the citizens of our community.
and recipients with a comprehensive eye banking program. For 35 years, the Medical Eye Bank of Florida has brought a rich tradition of service to central Florida, focusing directly on local tissue, tissue to local recipients. Last year, the gift of sight was transformed 1,614 central Florida families. Over 48,000 Americans receive the gift of sight through cornea donation and transplantation every year. Here with us today to present the Community Champion for Sight Award are Rebecca McCollum, Hospital and Community Relations Coordinator, and Kimberly Owens, Hospital and Community Relations Coordinator, both from Medical Eye Bank of Florida. I would also like to acknowledge Mr. Chris Brono, who is the Director of the Medical Eye Bank of Florida, but was unable to be with us here today.
Thank you so much, Mayor Dyer and Commissioner Ings and the rest of the council for allowing us to be here today. We're so excited to be able to present the Community Champion for Sight Award today to Commissioner Ings of District 6, who's become a great friend of our organization and who's been an incredible advocate for the gift of cornea donation and transplantation. As he noted, our Eye Bank was established in 1978. We reestablished ourselves here back in 2012 just to ensure that we could provide the best possible service for donor families, for surgeons, all of the hospitals that we work with, as well as for donor families who so generously give the gift of sight to others. In 2013, we were very fortunate to have Mayor Dyer and the City Council proclaim March as National Eye Donor Month in these very chambers by reading a proclamation into the record, and we're so grateful for that as well. Shortly thereafter, we first became formally acquainted with Commissioner Ings when he attended our agency's open house and our donor commemorative collage installment at our offices down on North Orange Avenue. While there, he was able to interact with donor families who were present to honor their loved ones who had given the gift of sight through donation and transplantation. It wasn't really until my colleague Rebecca McCollum attended the Mayor's, excuse me, the Commissioner's annual golf tournament, that we really became aware of what his personal connection was to donation and transplantation, when we found out that his mother-in-law had actually been a two-time cornea transplant recipient. And so, it became clear why they've become so dedicated, he and his wife, June, to the cause of donation and transplantation. Subsequently, attending a few of our events, being committed to donor families and to just letting them know how much we appreciate the gift that's been given on behalf of their loved ones. In December of last year, Commissioner and Mrs. Ings attended our annual donor quilt dedication ceremony where they were able to share their family's testimony, not only about his mother-in-law, but also his brother-in-law, who had been a kidney transplant recipient. So, we know very well that it's through the connection of donor families, transplant recipients, and through the sharing of stories, that's what motivates people to make the decision to designate themselves as a donor by signing up on Florida's donor registry. And without the generosity of donor families, without the gift of donation, absolutely nothing that we do would be possible. We would not be able to provide the gift of sight to people without that happening. And we also are fully aware without, that without the commitment of community leaders such as Commissioner Ings, that sometimes those stories will not be shared and lost opportunities are there for people to make the decision to designate themselves as donors. I just wanted to mention, I'd be remiss if I did not, he's absolutely right, that 48,000 people every year are the beneficiaries of the gift of sight through cornea donation and transplantation. It is actually the oldest type of tissue transplant possible, actually the oldest type of organ or tissue transplant possible. It was first performed in 1905, and the success rate of a cornea transplant is actually 95%. So, the vast majority of individuals who receive the gift of sight have successful transplants and don't have the need for a second transplant. We are so grateful to you, Commissioner Ings, for being such a champion of our cause and to help influence the lives of families in this community. And we are so honored to present to you with this year's Community Champion for Sight Award in appreciation for your outstanding support and commitment to the gift of donation. So, thank you so very much.
Okay, I don't think we had any presentations at the last meeting, so we made up for it today. I'm going to move quickly into the Mayor's Update. So, last week, we celebrated the 11th anniversary of the city's office, Hispanic Office for Local Assistance, otherwise known as OLA, which provides valuable information and referral services to residents and newcomers to central Florida. And they connect them with more than 140 government and community organizations, finding jobs, housing, health, social services, educational opportunities. And since opening in 2004, the OLA Office has served more than 150,000 citizens through in-person visits, calls, and emails. Orlando is a diverse, multicultural community, and our office welcomes newcomers. And I don't know of another city in Florida that has an office like the OLA Office. So, we're always looking for new partnerships, and I want to recognize Commissioner Ortiz for his leadership in these efforts and helping us connect our newly new residents to the City of Orlando. Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. As you know, we are working very hard, and I think that we could claim the status of being the most sustainable city in the southeast United States. And with that effort, working hand in hand, it is appropriate to, during the entire month of April, which is known as Earth Month, and particularly April 22nd as Earth Day, the city is hosting multiple events to invite our community to join us in our effort to go green. They are posted on cityoforlando.net for a full listing. Also, the 26th Annual Spring Fiesta in the Park will take place on April 11th and 12th in Lake Yola in downtown. It's going to be a beautiful weekend. We have over 200 artists and craft booths, a kids' play area, live entertainment, and, unlike the Winter Park Art Festival, dogs are welcome to the Spring Fiesta. I say that just because, not this year, but last year, I went and took Sammy, and they turned me away. And actually, they didn't quite have me escorted out, but it was pretty close. So, we have pet-friendly vendors, and we have activities at the 98.9 WMMO Pet Fiesta area. Again, you can go to cityoforlando.net for more information on that. So, a few items of note, although it's a non-controversial agenda, we have a lot of really good things on the agenda. One is the second phase of our Orlando Watts Sidewalk Project. The first phase, and both of these have been funded through federal funding, was approximately 17 miles of new sidewalks. And our second phase will add 22 miles of new sidewalks. Construction will start very quickly this spring and should be finished by late spring 2016. So, over the course of those two projects, 40 miles of new sidewalks. We'll also approve an agreement with Lynx to add new fare-free limo service to our north quarter in downtown. The new north quarter loop will add five additional limo stations to the current limo orange line, and it will start service on April the 19th, so right around the corner. And then, following that, we will break ground on the new lime line, which will provide transportation options along Huey, Creative Village, Link Central Station, Sun Rail, and Florida A&amp;M Law School. Okay, here's a pretty cool one. This, since it's Earth Month, the National Recreation and Park Association, Disney, ABC, and ESPN are collaborating to help revitalize parks around the US, and including a park right here in Orlando through something called Parks Build Community. So, we are going to be receiving a $20,000 grant. And Orlando residents get to choose which park it will be utilized in. So, either for trail improvements in Bill Frederick Park, equipment at the Paramore Kid Zone, or equipment for the Paramore Kid Zone Football Team, or a shade structure for the Orlando Skate Park. So, let's see, I think that pits Districts 4, 5, and 6 against each other. So, we'll see who gets to celebrate in about another month. And then, another big happening, we've had so many extraordinary things happen in the last year and a half, but this Wednesday, we'll be joining Orange County Mayor Teresa Jacobs and executives from Tavistock to break ground on the United States Tennis Association's new home of American tennis in Lake Nona. In addition to breaking ground, USTA will unveil the site's official name, new renderings of the campus, which will be 63 acres with more than 105 tennis courts. It is by double the largest facility of its type in America. It will also serve as the, as UCF's varsity tennis program home. On the agenda is a grant from, to the city from the FDOT on behalf of USTA to construct the entry road that is needed to access the new facility. We anticipate that this project will bring 150 new to Florida jobs with an average salary exceeding $85,000. So, it's certainly going to enhance our reputation as one of the sporting capitals of the United States. With that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda or update you on items of significance from their district. Hopefully, they won't be as lengthy as I was, and to set the tone, we're going to begin today with Commissioner Jim Burrow.
I'll set the bar for you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Two items. First, would like to thank all the volunteers and the citizen committees. We couldn't run the city without your volunteerism. So, congratulations and thank you for that. And also, would like to echo the Mayor's comments on Items C7 and 8, and thank the staff for working with the state on the agreement so that we can get that infrastructure in to facilitate and accommodate the USTA. It's exciting times out there, and that, that's going to be, as they say, a game changer. But thanks to the staff for that. And Mayor, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner. District 2, Commissioner Ortiz.
That was quick. Hold on a second. That was quick, Jim. Real quick, items of the district. On March 27th, I want to congratulate the Summer Business Partnership. They had their first golf tournament and raising fund for a non-for-profit organization. It was very successful, and it was really well put together. Also want to congratulate Dr. Jeff Gaults from Valencia Community College on the unveiling of the Valencia New School of Public Safety. On items of the district, I want to, I'm looking forward to this annexation to the city of 6933 Creek Ford Road. The plans have been presented.
And then following that, we will break ground on the new lime line, which will provide transportation options along Huey, Creative Village, Link Central Station, Sun Rail, and Florida A&amp;M Law School. Okay, here's a pretty cool one. This, since it's Earth Month, the National Recreation and Park Association, Disney, ABC, and ESPN are collaborating to help revitalize parks around the U.S. and including a park right here in Orlando through something called Parks Build Community. So, we are going to be receiving a twenty thousand dollar grant. And Orlando residents get to choose which park it will be utilized in. So, either for trail improvements in Bill Frederick Park, equipment at the Paramore Kid's Zone, or equipment for the Paramore Kid's Zone Football Team, or a shade structure for the Orlando Skate Park. So, let's see, I think that pits districts four, five, and six against each other. So, we'll see who gets to celebrate at about another month. And then, another big happening, we've had so many extraordinary things happen in the last year and a half, but this Wednesday, we'll be joining Orange County Mayor Teresa Jacobs and executives from Tavistock to break ground on the United States Tennis Association's New Home of American Tennis in Lake Nona. In addition to breaking ground, USTA will unveil the site's official name, new renderings of the campus, which will be sixty-three acres with more than a hundred and five tennis courts. It is by double the largest facility of its type in America. It will also serve as the, as UCF's varsity tennis program home. On the agenda is a grant from, to the city, from the FDOT on behalf of USTA to construct the entry road that is needed to access the new facility. We anticipate that this project will bring a hundred and fifty new to Florida jobs with an average salary exceeding eighty-five thousand dollars. So, it's certainly gonna enhance our reputation as one of the sporting capitals of the United States. With that, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda or update you on items of significance from their district. Hopefully, they won't be as lengthy as I was. And to set the tone, we're gonna begin today with Commissioner Jim.
I'll set the bar for you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Two items. First, would like to thank all the volunteers and the, the citizen committees. We couldn't run the city without your volunteerism. So, congratulations and thank you for that. And also, would like to echo the mayor's comments on items C seven and eight. And thank the staff for working with the state on the agreement so that we can get that infrastructure in to facilitate and accommodate the USTA. It's exciting times out there and that, that's gonna be, as they say, a game changer. But thanks to the staff for that. And Mayor, that's all I've got.
Thank you Commissioner, District Two, Commissioner Ortiz.
That was quick. Hold on a second. That was quick, Jim.
Thank you.
Real quick, items of the district. On March twenty-seventh, I want to congratulate the Summer Business Partnership, they had their first golf tournament and raising fund for a non-for-profit organization. It was very successful and it was really well put together. Also want to congratulate Dr. Jeff Galtz from Valencia Community College on the unveiling of the Valencia New School of Public Safety. On items of the district, I wanna, I'm looking forward to this annexation to the city of sixty-nine thirty-three Creek Ford Road. The plans have been presented to us, are very promising. I think it's, it's a good project and I think the community will welcome that with open arms. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. We'll move to District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
I appreciate them giving me their time. And so, for the next few minutes, I'll talk. No, Jim, I wouldn't do that to you. Just a couple of quick things. I, I wanna echo Commissioner Gray's comments about the volunteers. I've said it often, we simply cannot accomplish our task without the core of volunteers that we have, from our boards to people who serve in our community. It simply is a vital part of our community and I love them being involved. This past Saturday, had a chance to be over at the Wounded Warrior Lone Sailor Project over in Baldwin Park. They had their annual run, had eleven hundred people now, and they raised roughly about seventy thousand dollars going towards the Lone Sailor Monument that they hope to have completed by the end of this year. So, we're excited about our participation in that and our commitment. Mayor, thank you for your leadership and the staff's leadership for that. Couple of quick announcements in the neighborhood. The College Park Neighborhood Association is having a meeting tonight to go over the, some of the I-4 plans and then its impact in the College Park community. Please plan on attending. The Orlando Science Center is having their Inspire Science Breakfast this week. I'll have the opportunity to be there and just to, to support them. It's over at Lock Haven Park and we have to remember that this starts over there. Orlando Science Center starts in Lock, Lock Haven Park almost fifty years ago. So, this is a wonderful part of our community and I get a chance to, to be part of that and represent the city for that. The Lou Gardens Jazz and Blues Stroll is coming up and Saturday, the eleventh. So, at seven o'clock, go to our lougardens.org for more information. And then, of course, there've been a lot of talk about some of the rezoning around R2 and everywhere throughout the city. There'll be a public, another public meeting, a workshop done for the Missile Planning Board on April twenty-first. We'd love to get the community's input on that. So, please get a chance to come there before it comes here to City Council. And I want to mention those two things that you also mentioned, Mayor. C two, our, our, the, the northern expansion of the limo system is important. I'm thrilled about seeing that. And of course, as funding gets available, we'll continue to kinda go to Florida Hospital and to Orlando Health. So, there're gonna be important links to this downtown corridor and I appreciate your work and effort in that. And of course, Orlando Walks too. We are, on this council, I can tell you that we are committed to public safety and enhancement of our neighborhoods with sidewalks. Appreciate your initiative in doing that and appreciate the funding coming through to accomplish that task. And look forward to working with our staff to make sure that our communities are properly notified and, and given plenty of warning as this moves forward, so. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner. We'll move on to District Four, Commissioner Sheehan.
Well, thank you Mayor. And we got to spend a lot of time with the Easter Bunny this weekend with four different events, but I have to tell you, you know, a lot of people were posting on Facebook about their family events. And of course, Commissioner Hill's grandson, Poppy, was the cutest Easter outfit ever. That child is just darling. So, Poppy won the best Easter outfit, Commissioner Hill, you'll have to tell him that. On item B six, on city sidewalks, I'm delighted to see this, you know, three point one million dollars, twenty-two miles. I mean, I've been here sixteen years and when I first got here, we were doing sidewalks in Outobon Park. And I actually got death threats, we went to court. And I'm delighted to see sixteen years later that it's no longer that we have to fight to get sidewalks put in. And I'm delighted too to see that my district is benefiting from that because again, you can't have, you know, Sun Rail and transportation and bus rapid transit without having way for people to get there safely. And you just can't have people walking in the streets. So, I'm delighted to see this making our neighborhood safer and, you know, hopefully someday we'll get off that list, you know, the top, you know, municipalities, fatalities of people walking. I, I think that should be our aspiration and I'm delighted to see the funding put in place to do that. On item C six, I think this is just a great item, relocating the date palms from I-4 construction, to use them on Orange Avenue and downtown south. I think that's just brilliant. And anywhere else that we can reuse some of that landscaping from I-4 as they're doing their construction to beautify areas, I think that's an excellent idea. And, you know, I know that there's some other opportunities to expand that along Orange and if we can do that, work with the, the counties concerned about some maintenance issues. But this is so very, very important to do because again, beautiful, mature landscaping that we can put in just as long as we water it. It's a fabulous idea. And on item D one, I love the shade structure for the skate park. I know we gotta fight for it. So, it's on four, five, and six. Let's make something great happen for our city, that twenty thousand dollar grant. Thank you Lisa FPR for, for that opportunity to make, to beautify and, and add to the amenities in our districts. Thank you Mayor.
We'll move on to District Five, Commissioner Hill.
Yes, I'd like to echo the other Commissioner's sentiment about the walkability, especially there in the Paramore, which is big on our Paramore comprehensive plan, more people, less cars. Like to thank Chief Williams of the Orlando Fire Department and his staff, also Lisa Early and Park and Recs. As for Saturday, we had Community Day in Tinkerville where many people came out. We had barbecue, music. I'd like to thank the Communications Department for being there to take pictures of the folk and their children and families throwing baseballs from the mound, sitting in the stands, which it was a bittersweet day, I must admit, for some. But I, I was hoping and it did, it start bridging some of the healing. And that was one of the major purpose for it and also for people to come and talk about their memories there. Truly know baseball isn't dead, Tinkerville isn't dead. So, that was the beginning of a restoration, I would hope. You can also find, I know a lot of folk was asking about updates on Tinkerville and could they make suggestions and get information regarding some of the seats. And the city has created a website and a link where updates will be posted and also where seat sales, for some of the seats there, that will be savagable there at Tinkerville. And the funding will not, the money's raised will not go to the city. It will go back into the budget of commemorating Tinkerville. So, I just wanted to make that known. We also, Commissioner Ings was able to have a Easter egg hunt over at Poppy Pa, Poppy Park there in District Six, where many of the residents, about six hundred families and their children came out from District Five and District Six because on the right side of the Carver Shores Corner is District Five and on the left side is District Six. So, all the families came together, it was about three thousand eggs that the kids picked up. And it was just a beautiful time with both districts coming together in love. I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Stewart. On March twenty-fourth, we were able with Commissioner Ortiz and Mayor Dyer to go out and, and have the fifteenth annual street celebration there. It was, I think it had to be over five or six hundred folk and children, smiling faces. It was clown music. I didn't know the mayor knew how to electric slide, at least try. It was, it was great. So, thank you for your service there in the Paramore area for all the years, Commissioner Stewart. Look for many more. I'd like to inform the community that the Orlando Tech community that has been centrally located there in the downtown corner of the Old Church Street Station has now crossed over into the Paramore area, deep in the center of it, on the west side of I-4. And I'd like to thank Dan McGow, young thirty-something-year-old CEO of, I think it's, those tech folk are pretty creative. The name of the company is effing amazing. I tell ya, but what they're doing is partnering with my office on helping bridge that digital divide with teaching the kids computer science education and coding. They have already connected with the after-school All-Stars and they want to do a, start their own corp All-Stars there in the Paramore area. So, I really appreciate them for helping make folk know that there's some good things going on in Paramore, also on the west side. Another, another great organization is the Downtown Credo Group that, I, I did fail to mention, did I? Like to thank Lisa Early and the Parks and Rec, did I mention that? For providing those balls and gloves for us there on Saturday. I don't think that event would have gone the way it did if we didn't have those items there. Even the chief threw a ball across the mound. Yeah, so, thank you Credo, I'm gonna be quick. Thank you Credo for, and they're a part of that College Park Group. Thank you Commissioner Stewart for coming out to support that and being one of the judges. Where we had our first annual Paramore Parade along with the fourth annual Bike Rally. And I was the grand marshal of that parade and I was on a swaying girl's ten-speed. I was not in a vintage drop top. So, that was cool. And, and the kids truly enjoyed it and we ended it there in the ZR Raleigh Park with a fun day. And what we wanted to show, Credo and, and the office, is we were celebrating diversity. So, it was where people of all ethnicities, genders, sexualities could come together into a, a community where most people might not look like them and, and show love and support. And I think it was a, a great thing and I, I continue to thank Credo for all their efforts. For, they don't just do it once a year, but weekly, a group of special people in College Park are coming to teach our kids sewing and tutoring and mentoring them. And it does take a special community. And last but not least, I'd like to thank Reggie McGill, Walter Hawkins, and Marcy Goodwin-Hope. We were able to wrap up, not wrap up, but complete our urban task force action plan. And for months, we've been working on those initiatives. We were finally able to put it in a packet and we will be posting it online there on the District Five website. And we've, now we'll start to implement the action plan. As a matter of fact, we started this week when we have two families that we now have taken and it's similar to what they're doing over at the Men's Coalition. It's a supportive wraparound initiative where we're not just addressing the youth, but we're addressing their parents with parenting skills, their families, our guardians with jobs, delinquent activities, apprenticeship programs, mentoring, and poverty. So, I'd just like to thank those fifty folk, we still got about fifty or sixty people on board, started out with a few hun, at least a hundred. But I still say that's great for after four months that we have great community leaders that are truly, truly dedicated to seeing the district in our inner city. And I thank each and every one of you for taking on that burden. And thank you Chief Mina for still sending your, Eric, your Deputy Chief, he's been instrumental in that. And I know that we have your support and I know we're gonna be able to curb this violence and, and build families in the midst of it in our community. So, I thank you. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Awesome. Second? Fast, wait.
All right. I thought you told me you didn't have anything today, Commissioner Ring.
That wasn't me, that was great.
Okay. We'll move on to District Six, Commissioner Rings.
Thank you Mayor. You know, as I continue to celebrate Black History each month, I just want to recognize that I attended the Onyx Speaks at the Orlando Museum of Art on March the twenty-sixth. And it was to see and hear Amelia Boynton Robinson. And she is a hundred and three years old. She's the mother of the Voting Rights Act. As a matter of fact, she participated in Bloody Sunday on March the seventh, nineteen sixty-five. And that was the march from Selma, Alabama to Montgomery, Alabama, as they were attempting or crossing the Edmund Pettus Bridge. She also helped Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. plan this march and was so very significant and instrumental in that. And she was knocked down and left for dead. A seventeen-year-old high school student, shielded and protected her. His name is Joe Jones. And Joe Jones is now living in Jacksonville, Florida. And what was interesting about this event too at Onyx Speaks was that Joe was onstage with her and had an opportunity to see her again. Also in attendance was Commissioner Hill and Byron Brooks, our CAO. I want to thank Rich Black for all that he's done with Onyx Magazine. Rich is the owner. And of course, you know, they had the Onyx Awards on that Saturday night at the Performing Arts Center, Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center. And on Friday, March twenty-seventh, Orlando Monarchs Baseball kicked off their reception at the City Hall Rotunda, Ricky Weeks. And also that night, the Orlando Magic played the Pistons and I had the suite. So, I had another opportunity for some Black History moment. Martin Luther King III and his wife were in the suite with us along with Congresswoman Corrine Brown. So, that was a very influential night there.
I just went there.
And then, on Saturday, lots of things going on. So, with Commissioner Gray looking at me down there, I won't talk too much about those. But I will say this, the Magic Black Tie and Tennis Gala was a very successful event. And Mayor Dyer, of course, you were there. And Alex Martins, the President of Magic, did an outstanding job with this particular program. Huge corporate sponsors, Levy Restaurant and Lee Wesley and Associates. Lee Wesley and Associates being Arthur Lee and his company. And the food was just fantastic, so it was really great. And also, that same night was the Eleventh Annual Onyx Awards. And Regina McGill was on hand there to present and call out the elected officials. Thank you for your service continually, Reggie. And then, also Mayor, real quickly, I had a celebration of success, Central Florida Reception Center graduation program. And that was Thursday, April the second. And I was the guest speaker at the Central Florida Reception Center. And this involved seven inmates that received their GEDs. Ms. Letitia Silva, who used to work for the City of Orlando, is now a teacher there at the facility, invited me to come out to attend this event. I was, I also had the opportunity to meet the warden, Michael Morgan. So, this was a great event and he wants to do more to bring the community closer to the Reception Center. And so, I'm gonna work with him as much as I can to kinda make something like that happen. And it's really great because there's so much talent behind those bars. And we really have to do something to help these guys when they're coming out of prison to be able to get jobs and really to fit back into society. And then, this past Saturday, April fourth, the Minority Veterans Town Hall Meeting and Veterans Information Seminar was held at the Smith Center, sponsored by myself and the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, the Rathman Club, and the Rathman being retired Air Force, Marine, Army, and Navy, along with Mr. Arthur Jarvis, the President. This was a very successful event. Representing the Minority Veterans Program Coordinator was Edwin Johnson. And they had so much information and opportunities for veterans and they really went through that. And we're gonna do more to assist with those particular efforts because many of the veterans needed to really be there to receive some of these benefits. And just as a note, Mayor, the Veterans Administration is looking to build a new burial site, a new Veterans Burial Cemetery here in the Central Florida area. And it's gonna be in Bivard County. And so, that's gonna be great for us in the Orlando and Central Florida area. And so, Mayor, with that, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor, motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Let's, without objection, read- Let's, without objection, recess the City Council meeting and convene the CRA meeting. First item of business is accepting CRA Advisory Board meeting minutes from February twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen. Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two is approving the CRA meeting minutes from March ninth. Motion by Commissioner Stewart.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheen. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three is the second amended and restated operations agreement with Limo, which I guess we have already passed on the consent agenda, but this is the CRA portion of that. Do you want to enlighten us any more than that, Thomas?
Certainly, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor. Thank you and good afternoon, Commissioners and those attending there. So, Item Three, as the mayor said, is approving amended and restated operations agreement for Limo. We all know, of course, that since nineteen ninety-seven, CRA, the city, and Lynx have partnered on a downtown circulator, which we call Limo. In ninety-seven, there was one line, which became the Orange Line, two point six four miles, basically from City Hall up to the Central Plex. That agreement has been amended a couple of times, most recently on March thirty-first of last year when we added and it provided for both the new expansions, those being the Grapefruit as well as the Lime Line. And so, today pursuant to a Limo North and South Expansion Alternative Analysis Report, the original Limo line, the Orange Line, is now to incorporate an expansion up into the North Quarter District via a one point six four mile loop up into that district, which features three new stops and two new stations and an annual operating cost of just under ten thousand dollars. The CRA Advisory Board has recommended approval and staff is requesting your approval today.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheen. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
That was moved by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Sheen.
Okay. I'll restate that. Commissioner Hale's voice was sounding a little deep today. Actually, I don't hear as well out of my left ear as I do my right ear. How about that? All right. That motion, Madam Clerk, was by Commissioner Hale rather than Commissioner Ings.
Got it.
All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And Item Number Four, Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. Item Number Four is authorizing CRA staff to provide notices of proposed amendments to the CRA Community Redevelopment Area Plan as required by state statute. As you know, the Mayor Dyer has directed and CRA has provided funding for a planning and visioning initiative known as Project DTO Advancing Downtown Orlando that is ongoing and moving towards a conclusion. In anticipation of that and the three deliverables that come out of that, those being a division plan, a marketing strategy, and a comprehensive rewrite of the Community Redevelopment Agency area, Redevelopment Area Plan. This action is to authorize CRA staff to provide notices of the proposed amendments to the CRA Community Redevelopment Area Plan as required, again, by Section one six three point three four six of Florida Statute to the taxing authorities in the area. Staff requests your approval at this time.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Hale. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Any further business to come for the CRA, Thomas?
There's none, Mayor. Thank you.
Then we'll adjourn the CRA without objection and we will convene the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors meeting. Only business of the NID is to accept meeting minutes and approving actions of the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District Advisory Council for March eleventh, two thousand fifteen.
Some of them.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Was it the other way around?
That time it was, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Sheen made the motion. Commissioner Ings had the second, Madam Clerk. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Without objection, we will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting. We will reconvene the City Council meeting. That brings us to hearings. Ordinances on second reading, number one. Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance two thousand fifteen twelve, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to security fences, amending Section fifty-eight point nine three zero Orlando City Code to define security fences, to prohibit security fences in certain locations, to provide special regulations for electrified fences and to provide other regulations for security fences, providing for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Ortiz. And I believe that we incorporated several suggestions that council made during the first reading into the ordinance clarifying some, if I remember right, some barbed wire, whether barbed wire could be used and specifically where electric fencing could be used. Okay, discussion. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance two thousand fifteen eleven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to the Land Development Code, amending Part Three B, Chapter sixty-five, relating to subdivisions to allow lot splits for lots of greater than five acres in area under certain circumstances. Amending Section sixty-two point two zero zero to amend the definition of lot split, providing clarifying, grammatical, and technical amendments, providing for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance two thousand fifteen five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the city's adopted growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for a portion of approximately four point eight acres of land generally located north of West Gore Street, east of Lucerne Terrace, south of Ernestine Street, and west of Cool Avenue from office medium intensity to mixed use corridor high intensity, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. All right. Ordinances, first read. Madam Clerk, number one.
This is ordinance two thousand fifteen dash fourteen, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the Orlando Health Plan Development Zoning Ordinance to add approximately point five three acres of land to the planned development zoning district, such land being generally located north of West Underwood Street, east of South Lucerne Terrace, south of Columbia Street, and west of South Cool Avenue, providing a conforming legal description, PD planning, area map, and PD land use plan, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Some of them. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Ings, although I think both of you said it at the same time.
I did.
Okay. Anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance two thousand fifteen dash eight, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the land development regulations for the Nona Park Plan Development District, located generally at the southwest corner of the intersection of Narcousie Road and Dowden Road comprised of twenty-six point one acres of land, more or less, providing an amended development plan for certain lots of the planned development district, providing amended special land development regulations and permitted uses in the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today's meeting. Okay, so I've got one general appearance request card. Kelly Cohen. Did you want to speak, Kelly? Okay. Then we don't. Okay. Well, we did that already. So, we stand adjourned.